All right, can I get a motion to approve the agenda for, or to, for approval of the agenda for tonight? Actually, the meeting minutes from October fourteenth, I'm sorry, twenty fourteen. Can I get a motion in a second?
I'm sorry, just for the minutes.
For the minutes, for the meeting minutes from last month, last month.
I have a, I'd like to point out some, maybe two minor typographical error or just a not clear. The second sentence it has fourteen November, it should say fourteen, or it should say, whatever the date was.
October, okay.
So you changed, you changed November to October.
Yes, sir.
And then, if you would please, in the City Attorney Action Items, B, bottom on the first page when it says, talks about the Ethics Panel, top of the next page, the wording to me is a little ambiguous, it says Training and Ethics Guidelines, oh, excuse me, compensation was also mentioned in the council's discussion, sorry, I'm not using this. Compensation was also mentioned in the council's discussion in motion by Anderson, seconded by Fisher. Well, to make this clear, the motion was not to offer compensation for the Ethics Panel. So I just wouldn't want that to be the wrong connotation whenever a month, two months, a year from now.
Okay.
Okay.
We will correct that to not offer compensation, motion by Councilman Anderson, second by Councilman Fisher. Got it? Thank you. Any further discussion? Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Got a motion? Got a second?
Second.
Motion by Councilman Gunner, second by Councilman Fisher. Any further discussion? Can I get a vote? Councilman Fisher? Councilman Hill?
Yes.
Councilman Gutter? Councilman Collers?
Yes.
Councilman Anderson?
Approve.
Councilman Mahoney? All right? All right. Moving along, can I get a motion to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting?
May I make a motion that we accept the agenda for tonight? I would ask that we move number three up under my agenda topic, which is City Personnel Policy, move it to exact session.
Okay, so number three, move the, that to, okay, got it?
Also add another Personnel and Legal Matter.
Okay.
To exact session.
Also, Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
I wanted to add a item to the agenda for this afternoon, just to talk about the inspection of the building at Gordon Street School, ask for that approval.
Under discussion?
Yeah.
Under discussion, okay.
Well, no, it's an action item, I have.
An action item?
Yes.
Okay.
Action item.
Okay. You want to add Gordon Street School under action items? All right. All right, anything else?
Hello, um, sorry, movement River Hills, quick to action item? Did I get that right?
Gordon Street School?
Gordon Street.
Yeah, the, the building, I guess, on Gordon Street School?
Yeah.
To action item.
The documentation is coming your way.
Okay. All right, and that's in regards to the sewer and water hookup for that building, I think so. Okay, we can move that to a action item? Anything else? Got a motion with adjustments?
Mr. Mayor, I do have one item, I need to ask council to add to my agenda items. There is a retirement document that through GMA that needs to be approved. I would ask that we waive our requirement, as this is a document that was, is already past date. I can explain when we get to my item, if we take action on it, but it is the, the GMA, excuse me, the GMA Retirement Program.
Okay, all right, we can add that to the City Attorney Action Items. All right. Can I get a second? Got a motion? Can I get a second?
Second.
Second, my Councilman Hill, motion by Councilman Mahoney. Any further discussion? Councilman Fisher? Approve. Councilman Hill?
Approve.
Councilman Gutter? Councilman Collers?
Yeah.
Councilman Anderson?
Approve.
Councilman Mahoney? All approve, okay? All right, got approval of meeting minutes? So if we can get the citizens' comments, can we get that from there? David? Yeah, I'll get it. We'll move into citizens' comments, limit to three minutes, and I'll read the Rules of Decorum. The purpose of the Rules of Decorum, "I'll foster an atmosphere of civil and courteous discourse, even and especially when discussing contentious topics at all meetings held by the City of Washington. Now, all public comments should be as follows: Each speaker will be given three minutes during the public comment period. Each speaker will direct his or her comments to the mayor or presiding officer and not to any other individual present. Each speaker will refrain from personal attacks, foul or abusive language, and will maintain a civil and courteous manner and tone. Members of the audience will respect the rights of others and will not create noise or other disturbances that will disrupt or disturb the meeting. Any violations of the Rules of Decorum may result in violator being removed from the premises." And to start off, we've got Ms. Amethyst Nguyen.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, thank you for this opportunity to share, and a belated happy Veterans Day to all of our veterans in Washington Wilkes. I am here to speak about several things. The first thing is, I was a bit of a disturbance last month because Mr. Mahoney was making his statement, and I wanted everybody to know that I was the one that made that post. And also, I got a knock on the thing from the mayor because when he said assistant, I was gasping. So my, that's a nice segue into the fact that I am concerned about the fact that you, Mayor, broke the tie regarding, I guess this is the new city administrator?
It is.
And I wanted to know why the qualifications were overlooked, I want to know what I heard was his salary was a hundred and forty thousand, why that is so, and a transportation stipend. And since I'm asking about these things, a lot of times, we can't have a dialogue in this setting. So I was wondering, I had tried to get District Two, and Mr. Mahoney missed a meeting where we were trying to get a constituents' meeting, so that constituents can ask questions about things the mayor and the city council are doing, and we don't have to wonder, we can ask you, and it doesn't have to be contentious in a discussion. And so I was wondering if you guys would consider that kind of thing, so that we can ask questions, you can explain to us why you do what you do, because many things I don't understand, like how the qualifications were overlooked, how Mr. Mahoney even asked you, please don't break the tie. And in the past, you had not broken the tie for the previous person that was up. So that was a real big concern for me. But in a dialogue setting, you could probably explain why, and I would still like to know why, even if you send me an email or something. I am still concerned about the fact that there are not enough stores for shopping here in Washington Wilkes. I spoke to Brittany Buttry, as you sent me to her, she had a whole list of things that she's been doing on her job. However, she said she was working mainly with the small businesses around the square, and that Janet Parker is working with getting larger businesses into town. So I am still concerned that we don't have enough businesses in our town. So I realize you got your hands full, but I would hope that you and the city council would give some thought to trying to get more businesses, factories, plants, et cetera, into Washington Wilkes. I sincerely want to appreciate Councilman Anderson for bringing Record Tent Company here, and I think they're expanding.
Three minutes.
Et cetera. Thank you so much for that, and please look into the City West Cemetery, it's still dilapidated, and Rest Haven looks wonderful. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. All right, next, Doug Abramson?
I'm Doug Abramson, I'm not a resident of Washington, but my wife and I own property downtown. We want to see the city grow, and good government is key to that success. When, when I saw that the proposed Board of Ethics was not on tonight's agenda, I realized there might still be time to ask you to approve your decision-making processes to include more openness, transparency, and public participation. First, on openness, more needs to be done to help the public understand the proposed ethics changes. I understand you might not want to get into those details in a meeting, in the regular council meeting, but why not hold a public session to do so, as Ms. Nguyen suggested on a different subject? I've listened to the discussions at this meeting a number of times, I've read the proposed ordinance multiple times, it's not well drafted, there are a lot of loose ends, and it's hard to understand. My guess is I'm not the only one who doesn't really know what's happening there. On public participation, the public should have an opportunity to share their ideas with you about the Board of Ethics proposal. This could be done at the same public meeting where it's explained. You would learn more about what the public thinks, and you may well hear new ideas you haven't even thought of. On transparency, whether or not you start, whether or not you start a Board of Ethics, the council should commit to making the ethics complaint processes more transparent, rather than usually going into closed sessions as soon as the phrase personnel matter is used. Why not go behind closed doors only for limited purposes, and only if there's a compelling reason to do so? The more things you do openly, the more confidence there will be in the council and the mayor. This is clearly allowed under Georgia's Sunshine laws. In short, when considering the Board of Ethics, or for that matter, other really important matters that affect the community, why not use an approach that really emphasizes openness, transparency, and public participation? Thank you.
Thank you. Angela Booker?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to state a couple of things just for, well, as a matter of record. I noticed that there are quite a few action items on tonight's agenda, and as I recall, it was said that before an action item is brought to the agenda, there would be a discussion. And there are a couple of things that were not discussed, at least in the public setting. Also, I noticed that there is nothing on the agenda regarding the budget hearing. We are in November, and I think that in light of everything that has transpired regarding the hurricane and so forth, there should be, we should have had hearings, and I haven't seen anything posted. So if they have, then, you know, excuse that, but I noticed it's not on here tonight, and like I said, these are just two things that I wanted to make as a matter of record. Thank you.
Thank you. DeBrielle Lee? Ms. Lee?
Good evening, my name is DeBrielle Lee, I am, sorry, I am Washington Wilkes Pop Warner's ATDC and Vice President. We are here today to ask the City of Washington for financial support during this year's Southeast Regional Cheer Competition. It's held in Orlando, Florida. The dates for the competition is November twenty eighth through December first. This competition is very dear to us. Some of you may recall, in 2023, our cheer squads made history by being the first East Georgia team to advance to Nationals in the Hip-Hop Division. It is a great experience and a great opportunity for our young athletes. We have did several fundraisers, and we still plan to have at least one. We have a competition coming up Saturday. It's taken a lot of our time, but again, we have another fundraiser coming up, however, it isn't enough to cover all of our expenses that's needed for regionals. Some of our fundraising, it was postponed due to Hurricane Helene, and it affected, you know, a lot of our families, so, and I did not want to strip that away from the kids. We currently have fundraised six thousand eight hundred and sixteen dollars, and we are still in need of seven thousand six hundred seventy-nine dollars. We are asking for the remaining balance, but however, your donation of any amount would make a significant impact by helping us. If you would allow us, some of the girls have a quick little, something they would like to get off their chest, and I have a coach as well, so, I'm gonna pass, let's make it quick, girl, okay? And introduce yourselves, okay? I'll step out.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Chastity Nguyen, I've been cheering for eight years. My name is Chastity Nguyen, as an athlete, it would be greatly appreciated if the community could help us get to Florida. Last year, the community came out and helped us get different funds for Florida. Also, last year in Florida, we placed first and second place, and made history for being the first team from East Georgia to ever make Nationals and win the Hip-Hop Division. Cheer is the world to me. As a young student athlete, my definition of cheer is hardworking, strong, coachable, motivated, teamwork. So if the community could come out and help us this year, it would be greatly appreciated. We can get most of the funds, like transportation, meals, uniform, registration fees. Sincerely, here student athlete, Chastity Nguyen.
My name is Abigail Sowers, I am nine years old, I have been cheering for three years now. We have the opportunity to go to Florida, and let me tell you how much cheer means to me. When the hurricane came, I was practicing my dance every day, and we have been practicing since August. There has been so many times where I have wanted to give up, but I am so glad I did not, because I have made so many great memories. We have worked really hard, my team will make, and my team will make Washington Wilkes proud. Thank you, Abigail Sowers.
Good evening, my name is Alana Rogers, this is my second year cheering for East Georgia Pop Warner, representing Washington Wilkes. I love cheering because it has taught me the importance of dedication, whether it's mastering a new stunt or learning a new routine. The journey from struggle to success is very rewarding. The challenge to push myself to get better and make more confident myself or as part of a team is amazing. We support each other throughout the ups and downs. Most of all, I love cheering because it brings me joy, not to only me, but the people around me. From cheering at games to performing at competitions, it makes me happy to create memorable moments to say I am proud of in the future. For me, cheering is more than a sport, it is a way of life. Supporting us cheerleaders is more than just a donation, it's investment in our future, our personal growth, and the community spirit we bring to every event. Our contribu-, your contribution can make a meaningful difference, no donation is too small, and every bit of it helps. Thanks to my coaches, Coach Alex, Coach Chelsea, Coach V, and last coach, Alana Rogers.
Hi, guys, my name is Siya Godinez Alexandria, I've been cheering for one year, we really need donations, please, and I'm gonna tell you what's chilling, it's about, it's about being athletic and brave, but please sponsor us, thank you, but not only thank you, we need donations for going to Florida, because we need to be there and win, so we really need donations, thank you.
Hello, my name is Mary Carini, I've been cheering at Washington Wilkes Pop Warner for two years, and I'm gonna tell you how much Pop Warner means to me, and how good the donate, or how the donations mean to me. So, Pop Warner is a big place in my heart, it's because I have a bunch of friends, and like, even my cheer coaches, they, they're like a mom to me, they, they're like family. And these donations would be a big help, because going to Florida is just like, really fun and nice, knowing that we did good, and we got good donations, and we did good in competition, because it just like, says that we're still doing good, and that we're doing nice. And like, yeah. So, the donations are good, but even if it's just like, a penny, it would be okay, it's because anything is good. And Pop Warner is a big place in my heart, because, I already told you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members, thank you for giving us this time to speak. My name is Rhonda, and I'm here on behalf of Pop Warner, an organization that has been inspiring youth across our community. This program means so much, not only to my own daughters, but to many young girls who have learned the values of teamwork, resilience, determination, through this incredible opportunity. This year, I am honored to serve as a volunteer coach for JV Pop Warner Team. Juggling full-time work, being a full-time student, and also being a single mom isn't easy, but I do it because I believe in Pop Warner, what Pop Warner offers. I see how it lights up these girls' lives, and how they work hard day after day, driven by a chance to compete on a regional level one day. We have an exciting opportunity to take these youth athletes to Florida to compete, but we need your help to get there. We're reaching out today to ask for your support in helping girls realize their dreams. A small contribution from you could make an enormous difference in their lives, giving them an experience they'll carry with them forever. I'd like to leave you with a question. If this small investment could give these girls a foundation of confidence and inspiration to achieve more in life, wouldn't it be worth it? Thank you again for your time and consideration.
Thank you all. Next is Ms. Adrienne Etheridge.
Mayor, before, before, could we just, I just ask that, Ms. DeBrielle, could you form that in a proposal and share it with, I would say administrator, city administrator will look at it and share it with mayor and council, so we can get you guys a decision. I know it's two weeks, it'll come by real quick, so I know you guys, you, you young ladies, we need an answer real quick from this body, so, please form the proposal and share with our city administrator.
Thank you. Go ahead, ma'am.
Okay, good evening, Mayor and City Council members and city administrator, and those in the back end, citizens. I'm here representing the citizens, hopefully. I came about the disaster food stamps, that Wilkes County has not been approved as a county to receive any type of assistance, and these disaster food stamps are for individuals that do not qualify for normal food stamps, they're just for disaster only. And Wilkes County was counted as an impacted county, but was not counted in the phases of the disaster food stamps. So I came in to try to find out, is there any kind of way that this county and the citizens that deserve and need assistance would be able to get your support to find out how we can qualify for the disaster food stamps?
Thank you, thank you. All righty, that's it. Thank you for your comments, and that will be a question for EMA, and I will make sure that they get that question directed to them. Moving right along, Committee, Board, and Authority Reports and Review, let's see, Armor of Guard Boxing for Parks and Recreation Department, Josh?
Mayor of City Council, I'd just like to let some of my people speak tonight, we're very grateful for everything y'all have done for us so far, really been able to see a lot of great life changes this year. That right now, our record stands at eleven and one, we've lost one bout this year, we've been to twelve matches, lost one bout. So, they're doing well, some of them guys fought for me, of course, and Anderson that's still driving here to fight, actually have a boxer moving all the way from Norfolk, Virginia, his brother was the one that spoke here from the Army, he's getting out of the Navy, he'll be going pro in three months, and he's actually moving here in three months to actually be part of the community as well as box for us, but some of the youth that's here tonight, and the parents would like to speak.
Okay, go ahead.
Hey, Cole. Y'all like to stand? With the boxer, you'd like to come over and ask him?
Hello, my, my name.
You can take it out, you can take it out.
Hello, my name is Anthony Hurst, and I train with Coach Josh Rosen, that Armor of Guard boxer. Me, Armor of Guard boxing is more than the place to train, to learn how to become, become a better boxer. This gym comes with two incredible coaches that cares about the community, and care more about your mental health and physical health. They care about what goes on outside the gym, pushes you to become a better man, motivate you to help older kids not to go down the same road that I went down when I was younger. The community, the community needs this a lot, and I'm very thankful for them choosing to come to this city, and thank, and I thank them for the opportunity to help change my life from around, because plenty of people wanted to gave me this opportunity. So, thank you, Cole. And thank y'all for allowing me to speak, got y'all to go.
Representing that body, y'all, there's some different testimonies in there from some of the kids, some of the parents, it's rather than yours, well.
Okay, okay.
Philip?
Mostly everybody in this room knows who I am, I'm Philip Perkins, I spent excess of twenty, more than twenty-three years in law enforcement here in the City of Washington. I've committed a lot of my time in the City of Washington to the youth here, participated in many different programs, and I've seen the difference that some of these programs have made. I will tell you, I've had the pleasure of witnessing this program in action. Before it existed, I was here, and, and I saw what it was like for some of these young men that are standing before you now. And since it's been here, I've seen some of the major changes that has allowed in these kids' lives, and I, I can tell you, it's more than remarkable to me. I don't really have to stand up here and say much, because right there is the evidence of what this program can do. There is a program out there for many, for, for kids of all walks of life. When you talk about a program that can reach deep into our community, I believe this program is important, and it's a lot more important than some of the other programs I've seen. Every program serves its purpose. But we got kids in this community that's faced challenges that is no secret to this community, and some of these challenges, we can't relate to them. I mean, these kids are facing challenges we've had, we haven't had to face, right here in this, this very community, I grew up here. But when you sit back and hear the stories from them, about their own personal challenges and things that they've overcome, nothing tops it. And I've had the pleasure of being able to witness that, and I can't tell you what it means to me. I, when I tell you I put a lot of effort here, when this is type of program that teaches these kids about respect, teach young men how to be women, little girls how to, I mean, young, young girls how to be women, and teach young men how to become, I mean, young boys how to become men. It teaches that respect, it teaches self-discipline, it teaches them how to overcome challenges in life. It teaches them a lesson that you can't get from a lot of other things, in a way that they'll never forget it. And again, I feel like I'm repeating some of the things, but it goes more than just the physical aspect that you can get from them, like you talked about the mental health. When you talk about mental health, it can help these kids focus in school, it can help them focus when they talk about the future, the life, I mean, it could truly teach them something that they could carry throughout the rest of their lives. And, and like I said, I, I can't tell you how honored I am to be able to bear witness to it. I've been, I've been watching this program, long before this program, knew I was watching it. We, I ran into them in just different places around the community, and when I tell you I've seen the difference, because I, I know, I don't think there's anybody standing up here, I don't know. And when I tell you I've seen it, from before the program, and since they've been a part of the program, and I've seen the difference that it can make. And you don't really need me to tell you, because they wouldn't be standing here if it didn't mean something to them. You talk about setting foundations, that's everything, when, when it comes to life. And this program, I truly believe, will give these kids a solid foundation, it would help mold these youth, it would help mold their futures, and it would help make it solid, and, and it'd come shy of nothing but helping us improve our community. And I tell you, I- And you don't really need me to tell you, because they wouldn't be standing here if it didn't mean something to them. You talk about setting foundations, that's everything when when it comes to life. And this program, I truly believe, will give these kids a solid foundation. It would help mold these youth. It would help mold their futures, and it would help make it solid. And 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 it'd come shy of nothing but helping us improve our community. And I tell you, I would be very thankful, anything that the the city council could do, anything that any citizen can do to help programs, not just those, but any programs like it, but the day I'm here talking about this one, anything we could do to help a program like this go is well worth it to me. And I I would hope that you you all would feel the same. So anything that you all could do, and I'd like to thank the council for listening to me, and anything that y'all could do to help us continue to uplift in this community.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I could just take the easier route and say I concur with Mr. Phillips. Um, council, mayor, thank you for giving us the opportunity to be here to to speak on behalf of this program. Um, I'm new to the community of Washington Wilkes, glad to be here, and uh, want to share with you a little bit about my experiences. My name is Dave Crickard. I'm a recent retired from the Federal Bureau of Prisons at the Director of the Staff Training Academy, the Federal Law Enforcement Training Center in Brunswick, Georgia. I spent over twenty-five years in the federal prison system, had a number of roles, starting off as an officer, went on to be a counselor, then a case manager, later a unit manager, executive assistant, associate warden, and then ultimately as the Director of Staff Training Academy. Throughout my career in law enforcement, I've read a lot of pre-sentence investigations, spoke to a lot of inmates, always with the goal to get them to return to be a successful member of society. But once they're in prison, we have already failed. We need to focus on what prevents them from getting and going to prison, and that's programs like Armor of God. The Armor of God is going to reach individuals that church won't. If I had to take a poll of myself and my federal citizens here, most of us have been involved with church of some sort. Some of these programs, such as Armor of God, will reach people that standard church won't. Over my twenty-five-plus years, I would speak to inmates at a rival orientation, and I would tell them some of the things that we've all heard throughout our lives. Show me the people, the places, and the things that you do, I will show you your future. These programs, whether it's Armor of God or this lovely group of young ladies over here, we are investing in their future. I implore this council to invest in these programs so we can give these kids the choices and the opportunities to be successful, because we are all sums of our choices. We have an obligation, and now we have the opportunity to provide them an opportunity. I'd like to thank Coach Owen and his wife for the things that they do to reach these kids. I personally witnessed some of these young men be saved and baptized. So I fully support this, and I implore this council to do the same. Thank you for the opportunity.
Last one.
Um, first, I would like to thank each and every one of y'all for giving us this opportunity to tell about Armor of God. Um, my name's Kristen Lamar. I've been a resident in Wilkes County my whole life. Um, for years, we prayed and prayed for a program to come to Washington that was, you know, Christian-based and kind of teach them how to be leaders and not followers. Um, let's see. My son, Carson, he joined two years ago. Um, well, he started training with Josh and Dana almost two years ago, and on the first day of the meeting and talking to them, I knew God put them in Wilkes County for a reason. The whole Armor of God Boxing crew has become family to us. Our community needs more people like Josh and Dana, who are trying to make a difference in the lives of our youth by teaching and showing them what God can do for them with the faith, dedication, and hard work. I've personally seen lives, let's see, I lost my spot. I've personally seen the lives Josh and Dana have inspired and changed with the love and faith in God. Armor of Boxing is so much more than boxing. It's family. It's knowing that you have people on your side and can always talk to. They love you and teach you that through Christ you can rise up and be the best person God wants you to be. I've seen lives saved right there in that gym, and many of those baptized by Josh on our camping trip. Um, and that was a really, really great experience, because some of these kids have never been camping. So seeing them roast marshmallows, and we had, um, other preachers come and speak to the kids and tell their testimonies and all that. Um, they've arranged so many events in the community. Josh has even took it upon himself to take cases of Gatorades over to the basketball court, to the, you know, the boys out there. Um, he even had all of, you know, all of us meet up at the local nursing home. Our guys handed out roses to the residents, and if y'all could have seen the smiles on their faces, that that made their whole entire day. Not only did they do that, but they all stood by patients' beds and held their hand and asked, can we pray with you? You do not see enough of that in Wilkes County. And for Josh and them to come in here and with open arms and, you know, trying to teach these kids that running the streets or sitting behind a closed door playing video games all day long is way to be, is not. He's trying to inspire them, show them what the word is all about, and I could not be more proud to be a part of Armor of God. And I can tell you, every last one of them is my family. And I, I hope any of y'all that have not been out to the gym, um, we invite y'all and love for y'all to come out there and see for yourself what it's all about and what it's doing for these kids.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Josh. We appreciate all you're doing for our youth, so anything we can do. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Is there a special request that Armor of God are asking from this body? Josh, thank you so much for your work.
No, they're not asking for anything.
Thank you for what y'all done so far. We're very grateful for the building and the things y'all done, and the people that come in to save the world. We really want to continue to be part of this community. We do that.
Alright, thank you. Moving along, city attorney action items.
Uh, mayor and council have two items. The first, uh, the charter amendment. This is the second reading of the elected official's travel policy under section seven of the charter. If you, council will remember, we started this process an awful long time ago. There are certain newspaper notice requirements that are required, uh, to be followed to amend your charter. But now we are finally through the last part of it. This will be the last reading, and essentially what we are doing is previously, there was a limitation of, uh, one necessary trip or training per year for council members. Instead, you're taking that provision out of the charter and allowing yourselves to adopt your own written travel policies. Um, city administrator shall establish procedures for all travel requests and reimbursements to ensure compliance with policies set by council. Previously, what we've determined is that, um, there were some trainings that we wanted to allow council members to get to in excess of one per year. Um, so this would be consistent with what we have done previously. And again, this is about the fourth time this body has seen this provision, and the reason it keeps coming back is because there's some newspaper notice requirements and other things that have to be done. But I could take any questions, but this is something the council's approved several times previously.
Any questions?
Only question I got, um, Nelson, is, uh, this is the, this is going to be the policy now, that, uh, the line that was drawn out, so, if there's, all those stuff takes the same.
Correct, and I think there's a, the last sentence, um, that starts with council shall adopt written travel policies on that first page, right above the strike through. That is the added section.
Okay. We had to change the charter before we could write the policy, so now we'll work on the policy, and we'll get everybody involved in that. So I think we've already mentioned a thirty-five-hundred-dollar limit, but we'll, we'll discuss that moving forward. Alright, second item.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I will need a vote on that item.
You need a vote on that, okay. Motion by Councilman Coles, second by Councilman Mahoney. Councilman Fisher?
Approve.
Approve. Approve. Councilman Hill, Councilman Gunnar, approve. Councilman Coles, Councilman Anderson, Councilman, alright, all approved. Thank you.
And council, the next item, um, so I I discussed this earlier this, tonight, but GMA handles our retirement program, and effectively periodically, this body will make changes to the retirement system that requires all the members, uh, that participate to adopt. Uh, this is usually done at the beginning of the year. Uh, for some reason, it did not get done for us. Uh, this is, I can get specific into what the changes are, but this is a policy change that affects the entire retirement system of, uh, GMA. So this would be every city that participates in GMA also approves these, um, changes. These are really high-level changes that primarily deal with reemploying employees that have already taken retirement benefits if they came back. Um, we do this annually. Typically, uh, this comes around about every February or or March. Uh, for whatever reason, it was not done, uh, by the city this time around, and this document needs to get approved tonight so I can submit it to, um, GMA. And essentially, this is preserving your right, uh, or excuse me, your employee's right to participate in the retirement system for GMA. And the authorization would be for the mayor to, uh, sign any applicable documents.
I've got one question. It says it's for the person that's getting retirement and want to come back, what would the effect would they have?
So essentially, it, what now is in place would limit the ability to participate in the retirement system if you, if you were retired and then you came back to work for the city. Uh, this addresses that. It's on a case-by-case basis, depending on what the employee would want to do. They have the option. Uh, currently, it doesn't appear that they would have the ability to do that, and this would allow the employee to do that, subject to that employee's own taxable, uh, situation or other choices they might have.
So, but still, if they came back, they still draw their retirement, just what would the city, or just one drop down?
Uh, it would, it would have an impact on their retirement. They'd have the option of, uh, pulling from the retirement or to not, not pull the retirement and freeze it until they come back.
Can I get them? Yes, sir.
Um, city attorney, is there any updates in our personnel, uh, policy that we need to upgrade with moving forward with, um, approving the GMA statute?
So the GMA statute, the, the GMA policies, uh, they're done on the GMA level. It's a federal, uh, system, uh, so by doing this, you would get in line with what they have on the books. Your other question about your personnel policies, I believe your personnel policies are around five years old, I think. Uh, it is probably time to review and go back in, and obviously, there's a lot of things that we've talked about over the last year that may need to be implemented, uh, changes I've heard from everybody on the council. Um, this document really has more to do with the retirement, uh, option for your employees, not so much on the personnel side. But to your question, y- you probably are in a position where you would need to, um, make those changes. I think the last time we did it was twenty-nineteen, I think. So yes, sir.
You have a question? Motion? Get a second?
Second.
Second motion by Councilman Mahoney, second by Councilman Coles. Councilman Fisher?
Approve.
Councilman Hill?
Approve.
Councilman Gunnar?
Approve.
Councilman Anderson?
Approve.
Councilman, all approved. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Alright, moving into mayor discussion and action items. Introduce Will Long. It was a vote that needed to be done, I think, and I will address the reason. The previous vote on the interim city administrator, um, was I did not break the tie, because if we would not have kept him as city administrator, he would have lost his position as Department Public Safety, or Department of Public Works, or his, whatever his department was, he would have lost that job. And that was, uh, I asked them specifically in the comment sections about that, and they said, yes, he would lose his job if he did not retain the city administrator position. So I could not, I could not vote for that. I'm sorry. Um, John Barnett is a great, great gentleman. He's a great, great public works director, and I will keep him here as long as he wants the job here, and as long as I'm mayor. Uh, but I could not allow, put him in a situation where he would lose his job. I just couldn't do that. So that's why I voted against that. So, and I voted to break this tie only because I'm tired. I did not sign up to be mayor and city administrator. I can't be at the office of the city five days a week. I was on call. I, I do run a medical practice, and I have patients that I see daily, and there was no way I could keep up with that and running the city at the same time. I did the best I could, and I hope I did well. Um, I know that it was a hard, hard task. I did not ask to be put in that position, but I think the right candidate came along, and I voted for that, and I will stand by my vote one hundred percent. And I think the citizens of Wilkes County and Washington, Georgia will be proud of who we hired in the very near future. So, um, it, Will, you want to say anything?
Just first and foremost, thank you. Um, I'm happy and I'm honored to, to not only serve the citizens, but to be here with the great staff that we already currently have. Um, I've been a resident of Washington my entire life, born and raised, grew up here, and I'm just happy to be back serving my community. Thank you.
Alright, and millage rate set? We've got to set the millage rate tonight so we can get the bills out. Yoshi, it's at eight, eight point zero six eight. That's what we're currently, yes. I need a motion to approve the millage rate in a second.
I make a motion to approve the millage rate.
Motion by Councilman Anderson, second by Councilman Mahoney. Any discussion? Alright, go to a vote, call vote. Councilman Fisher?
Approve.
Councilman Hill?
Approve.
Councilman Gunnar?
Yes.
Councilman Anderson?
Approve.
Councilman Mahoney? Okay, alright. So that's approved, alright. Retreat planning, uh, I do want us, uh, as we have a new city administrator now, I'm asking for a retreat for the city council and the mayor and the city administrator to come together so we can, uh, talk about what needs to be brought to the forefront, what needs to be done immediately. Uh, I know the budgets, Will's, Will is working very hard on the budget right now, so we should be having the budget hearings here real soon. He finally got all the department heads', uh, material back, and we're working on that. We're still waiting on the, on the audit to come back, which so, should be back hopefully this week, I'm hoping. Uh, so that way we know exactly where we stand, um, and we'll go from there.
When you say audit, you mean forensic audit, or you're just talking about the regular audit?
The regular audit. I have not seen the regular, the forensic audit will be back later this week, and I'll, I'll approach to y'all as soon as I get it. So I spoke with him today, so. DDA appointments, we need to replace two people for the DDA. We're doing it a little early. Theirs, their terms don't end until January. However, with all that's going on with the downtown development authority, authority, we need to go ahead and put some people on there so they can go ahead and start getting educated, because they have to take classes. The DDA has asked that for, to replace Ed Pope Jr. with Stasio Rusik. He is a lawyer here in town, has a business right off the square. And then to replace Janet Parker with Steve Albertson. He is a CPA that has an office right off the square. Can I get a motion in a second? Motion by Councilman Gunnar. Can I get a second? Councilman Anderson?
I have a second.
Alright, any discussion?
Discussion, it's one of these, um, how many minorities on the DDA?
Um, one, I think. I'm not sure. I think one.
Who's that minority?
Mr. Mayor, everyone's speaking to the microphone.
Yeah, speaking to your microphone.
How many minorities on the DDA?
I think one. I think Eric Luke.
So the DDA, are they all looking for minority to get, to be on their board, or?
Yes, they've asked, they've asked minority business owners and.
They have asked?
As far as I'm, I know, yes, they have. That's how we got Eric Luke on it. Any further discussion? Alright, can I get a vote? Councilman Fisher?
Approve.
Councilman Hill?
Approve.
Councilman Gunnar?
Approve.
Councilman Coles?
Yeah.
Councilman Anderson?
Approve.
Councilman Mahoney?
Approve.
Alright, unanimous, thank you. Um, like I mentioned a second ago, the forensic audit, I talked with Sam yesterday, and he's, is trying to, he's got two more things I think he needs, and then he can finish the forensic audit up. So hopefully, we'll have that by the end of this week or first part of next week. As soon as I get it, I'll let council see it, and we'll discuss it and then move forward. Um, the good thing about the forensic audit is that we give the new acting city administrator, um, a clean bill of health, so that way he knows what he's coming into, so. Uh, Georgia Public Web Sales?
Mr. Mayor, when you say the forensic audit, you're going to get it back to us, kind of define that just a little bit more, because I want to make sure that I get a call or get an email.
Uh, yes, as soon as I get the forensic audit, I will email it to each and every one of you, and then I will also text you, since some of you don't check your email, uh, and make sure that you go and look at your email. So that way you have it in hand, so that way you can look at it, and that way we can come informed the next time we meet, so. Okay? Any other questions?
Question on this, on the forensic audit, is it the, if it's the, if it has issues that we would like to explore, is the auditor able, willing, and available to sit in with us if we need, whatever we may want to do about this?
Yes.
If we want to have, if we want to have, you know, a called meeting to discuss it with the auditor, then he's available to do this, assuming we're available?
Yes, yes. I talked to Sam, I talked to him today, I asked him, and he said, that's, yes, he's definitely available to come in, and he will, he prefers to come in and go over it with us in person. So, we'll either have a called meeting or we'll do it in December. So, yes, yes.
And if I could, same when you were talking about planning and calendars, when you talk about the retreat planning and the need to do that sooner rather than later, or do you have a window of time that you're looking at for the retreat?
Yes, I'd like to try to do it before our next council meeting, if possible.
Within the next month.
Depending on holidays, yes, yes. If not, if not, as soon as possible by middle of December, so. Georgia Public Web Sales, I'll let Adam talk a little bit about this.
Counsel, previously, I think it would have been in the prior mayor's administration, Georgia Public Web, which was an arm of MEAG, sold its interest. It was, at the time, an internet service provider that MEAG offered to some of your clients or some of their participants. This entity was not a part of it, but we did receive a small amount of revenue. That, Georgia Public Web was actually sold to a private company, I believe it was two or three years ago, and this were several installment payments were made. The city hold, held a 1.9% interest in that entity. You, along with 31 other cities, agreed to sell that interest. You received an initial payment, and I'm not exactly sure what that payment was, but obviously, we can find that out. But the final payment is coming due, and there are some paperwork that the chair, that the mayor needs to be authorized to receive that final payment. It's something we've already agreed to a while back, and all they're asking is making sure that we're still an entity that receives those payments, so.
Okay. Can I get a motion to allow me to sign that for the, motion by Councilman Coler, second by Councilman Mahoney, Councilman Fisher?
Approve.
Councilman Hill?
Approve.
Councilman Gunner?
Yes.
Councilman Coler?
Approved.
Councilman Mahoney. All right, so, all right. Employee Christmas party, the employees, we've always done something for the employees and in lieu of Hurricane Helena and all the extra work that they did and all that, we, I asked Brittany and them, and well, they, actually, they came to me and asked me if we could, they could put on a Christmas party. John Barnett allowed them to get a facility to house it at the VFW, and they came up with a date, and there is funds in the, in the budget for, that are available that we can use. Do you want to talk about that? About what? Okay, all right. But yes, there is funds there, and basically, I don't, I don't know in the past if they've ever approved, got city council to approve it, because I don't even remember seeing it at the meeting minutes or anything. But I just wanted to bring it to your attention to let y'all know that, that I think they need the Christmas party. I think it'll be a good bonding event for, for all of them, for all the hard work they do for us, especially through the last year and what all they've been through in the last four or five years, so. If it's all right with y'all, I'd like to move forward with the Christmas party.
What budget is coming out of it?
It would come out of the, what did, what did we say, Yoshi, the, was it the hospitality budget?
How long has budget been created, hospitality budget? How much?
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know. I know we've got it that, and we've got it also off of the, off of the admin budget that we could use it out of too, so, yeah.
Are we transferring money to this budget, or how is this?
No.
You don't know how much money in the budget, but we're going to use the money out of that budget.
Well, we can tell you, so. What'd you say, Yoshi?
I said, if the council can't, if the money is already in, but I can't think of...
Yeah. Our financial person's already said that the money's there, so.
I'd like to know what account is coming out before we approve anything about the Christmas party, because we've been having a Christmas party before, and it should have been a budget set aside for employees, whatever you want to call it.
Yeah, before, I think it came out of the admin budget, yes, from what I could tell in the past, so. But I will get that information to you, but we want to go ahead and proceed on with the, with the Christmas party.
Question on, do you have an estimated cost on the Christmas party? Do we have a rough order of magnitude of how much we're trying to allocate?
Yes, that was, what was it, Yoshi, 4,000?
Eighty-five thousand.
Six thousand, okay, around $6,000. But it's, but that's to rent the facility, decorations and all that for the employees, and that's gifts for the employees too, so.
All right, so, and that's how, about, approximately how many employees?
Seventy-five.
I guess it's all employees.
Employees plus one, so, yeah.
So, yeah, plus one, so we've got over, well over 100 people, about 150 people probably, okay.
So, we're going to rent a place and they could use this thing out?
No, no, the VFW is, is already giving us this.
No, no, mayor said renting.
I thought, well, I'm not the expert on this, but I thought the, the offer was to use the VFW with no charge.
No charge, no charge, yes. That was my mistake, yeah, no charge, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
The details in terms of the Christmas party itself, will the city or staff be responsible for that in terms of the food, the decoration, including that, inside that budget? Will all of that come out of the budget to take care of the food, the decoration?
Yes, yes, yes. All the decorations and food, and then there'll be gifts for the employees too, so, yeah.
Are we planning on hiring a caterer for the food, or how are we doing that?
Yes.
Do you have any, I guess I'm asking the same question that Councilman Coler's asking. Do we have any caterers in mind that we're already approaching or contacting? How is that working?
Yes.
It's already been advertised. I think we had three vendors for the A B, for food, for decorations, for all of that.
Okay.
Yeah, the way I understood, the way I understood it was that they're going to take those three vendors, and each one of them's going to do a section of the food, so that way, we, we're not limiting it to one vendor, like one's going to do desserts, one's going to do food and prep.
Yeah, and I, and I think that that got to be handled carefully to make sure
Yes.
that we don't cause any friction with vendors that are, that are doing business with the city and not picking someone. But I guess my last question would be in terms of the employees itself. How, how to report? Are you getting good vibes and report from the employees about the Christmas party, the Christmas celebration?
Well, Brittany had a meeting last Thursday with the department head. She's putting together invitations, and she's asking, go ahead, count, which will be charged according to our head count, so it'll be employee plus one, we'll get that head count, and then that will determine how much we'll pay for the catering and so forth.
Okay.
But, yeah, she's reaching out. Every department, just like my people, I have their invitations for themselves and their plus one.
Mrs. Yoshi, I'm for moving forward with it, but I would like to know some of the details, so if each department can, can speed up that process in terms of reaching out to the employees and letting them know, are you going to be there, how many, the family members, and so forth and so on. I would like to know more detail, instead of saying, we got a budget, but we don't know how much is in the budget, we don't know where the funds are coming from. That doesn't, that just doesn't fit.
They know I'm not on the meeting.
Okay. Well, I'm just saying how, it just doesn't fly.
Yeah, I took it from the financial, financial person that there was funds there available and that, that she had the money to do this, and the new city administrator can work on that, so.
To Mr. Coler's point, Councilman Coler's point, I mean, these bridges should have been crossed before we say, let's do it, but now it's off, now it's off like we're already obligated to have this party and...
No, we're not obligated. I'm asking tonight if we can move forward with it. We've planned it, but we've not set it in stone until we get approval, so, yes.
So, then are you suggesting there should be a limited amount of money that we spend as a, for the Christmas celebration?
Yes, I mean, we can set that limit, that's what I'm saying, yeah. It's, if it's 4,000 or 6,000, we can set it, and we can, we can go back and reverse from there, so, yeah, yeah.
I just want to make sure that, you know, some of those...
Yeah, it's, you know, it was, I know it was an item that was brought up last month, and we wanted to cover it again tonight, just to make sure. I know in the past, we've never asked for counsel, or from what I've understood, they've never asked for counsel approval to do a Christmas party. A lot of times, it's been luncheons at restaurants downtown or gatherings, so this is something I said, well, let's just ask, just to make sure that it's approved, so.
And I think the last past minister, that's the problem. He wasn't doing what he's supposed to, come back to the council, get his question down. That's the problem.
Well, that's, that's why I'm bringing it back to you, so.
He did something that he shouldn't have been doing.
Uh, that's why I'm bringing it to y'all, let you know. So, and the new city administrator in the future, he can do that too, so. But I'd like to move forward with this, if I can get a motion to move forward with it.
Y'all want to move forward, but you see, you don't have all the information that we need to move forward.
Brittany's got the information, and I'll, and I'll get it to you, okay?
How soon is, what kind of, what day this will be?
They're looking at December 13th.
Okay, then, December 13th, when our next council meeting?
I'll have it to you before then, and we'll get, we'll call, call meeting if I have to. All right, thank you. Moving forward. All right. Section seven ordinance violation. Ladies and gentlemen, the reason we're changing the travel policy is because in the past, the, I feel as a mayor and city council, we are supposed to do exactly what the charter says as the CEO of the city. I'm expecting council members and employees to do exactly what the charter says and what our policies and procedures says. It has not been being followed in the past. I can tell you that council members have gone to four or five different trainings a year, multiple trainings that they've had, you know, trainings within 60 miles, and they've stayed in hotels, and that's why we're changing this policy now, is because I want us to be a good steward of this money, and I want us to make sure that, you know, the education that the council members and the city employees need, they need, they need to get there. But then again, we need to have a hold on what they're going to and which ones they can and can't attend. I'm not cutting them out of anything. I don't think the policy should cut them out of anything, but I think they should be able, given a credit limit or a 3,500, 2,500, whatever we approve limit, instead of spending, you know, $16,000 in four years for four meetings a year, that's, you know, a little bit excessive for me, so. But that's why we're doing this policy, and I just wanted to let you know that that's the reason that we had the second reading tonight, and moving forward, we'll set a limit, a policy and procedure on how we do that, who gets funds, how much we get for each event, and we'll move forward with that, so, thank you. Council member discussion, Councilman Coler's.
First, I want to bring up the WCCP. I want to ask that the council, I'm going to make a motion to vote for Marion Tutt to be on the Family Connection Board.
There's, there's no open, there's no open position.
Name the people that's on that board.
We only, we only get two appointees. Councilman Hill and, Councilman Hill and Tina Bailey are on that, on that committee.
When did we approve for Tina Bailey to be on?
In February.
You got documentation, show that?
Yeah, I sure do.
Let me see it.
I'll show it to you, I'll be glad to show it to you tomorrow. I'll be, I'll be glad to show it to you later, moving forward.
Look, don't cut me off. I'm asking for information that you keep sending.
And I'll be glad to show it to you. She, she got her official letter.
You got this information that I was going to put him on the document, nice. Why didn't you bring that information to show that we, this council voted to have on the board? That's what you stated?
I didn't, didn't know you were going to...
I'm asking you a question, is that what you stated?
Yes, the council voted, put her on the board, yes, yes.
I can't wait to see that.
Okay.
So, if they have not a vote, then I'm going to have a problem.
It was the same night we voted Lisa Fisher to be on it, and she didn't want to be on it, we appointed Tina Bailey.
No, we didn't appoint, you had to vote.
Yes, we did. We have, we voted her. Okay, moving forward.
I have a point of...
Excuse me. Every time I'm talking, I have this problem. I don't need him in on the, what's your point?
I was going to ask a question.
What's your point?
That's not a point, it's asking a question. The question is, on our boards, commissions, and authorities, in those, we are limited, some of those are designated to be city appointees, and some are designated to be county, and they have different terms. I know there's a matrix, and it's, it's, you know, within, within our documentation. My question is, do the, all the, do all of the appointees demand or require a vote of the council? That's my question.
It does.
Well, I'm not sure it is. I don't know if that's the correct answer, but, and I will defer, but that's my question, because I don't know 100% answer on it. I thought some of those, I thought some of the positions require, potentially require the vote of the council, and others are designated by the mayor. That's been my experience over the last three years.
You're talking about this specific board right here.
Understand you're talking about this specific board, but I'm asking a question.
Every time I'm talking, you want to say a question.
No, I just wanted to have a question.
I don't need him talking while I'm talking.
Well, he was asking a question. Go ahead.
Ask his question, man.
Council attorney?
There are some, there are some boards that we make appointments to that are made by just one person, and then there are some that are done by council. It just depends on what it is, and...
That is exactly right, but the point is, we're talking about this board here that who's make the appointment, who make the motion. Why are we talking about all the other boards?
We aren't talking about all the other boards. I asked, do all departments require the vote of the council? And the answer is no. Thank you.
Once again, I'm going to make a motion that Marion Tutt be appointed to the Family Connection Board.
Have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Second by Councilman Hill. Discussion?
So, I think we need to first find out, research, and find out if the motion was made from Ms. Fisher and Ms. Bailey to be on the board. If it was, then there is no seat. And if there isn't, then I think that...
And WCCP is aware of her, her appointment?
Has she, has she been attending the meetings?
She has not, because they did not have the correct email address, but she, they have got that now, so, yes, yes. So, okay. Any further discussion? Table the event?
Is that board full?
Yes. Table it till next month then, okay? Table it next month. All right, next.
We had an investigation of the housing partners over on Wild Street. Who gave you the authority to do that?
So, and I'll address this, because I know you have this as an agenda item too. According to my notes, in discussion with the mayor, the mayor is the individual who makes appointment to, and if so chooses, removes members of the housing authority. My conversation with the mayor led to me to believe that the mayor was under the impression that, or directed us to investigate the ongoing condition at the housing authority properties for the sole purpose of determining whether or not there was a need to address any issues there. The result of that investigation was that the properties were in good condition, save for a few items that were being worked on. So, the result was that everything was okay. This dispute regarding our direction, while though it came from the mayor, after discussing with the mayor, if there's any miscommunication between him and myself, or actually, any member of council, I am going to take the position that the city of Washington should not pay for that. So, and after talking it through with the mayor, I have not, I have credited that money and the expenses related to that investigation back to the city.
When was it credited back, the $805, when was the credit back to the city?
The most recent bills that went to the city, which I, I don't have a copy of those.
We have a credit of, you were crediting that money and also?
The cost associated with the open records request.
So you stated that the mayor that you was thinking that you was supposed to do an investigation, but you what? That's what I'm hearing?
I think that's a fair way to say it, Councilman. And then if that fault lies with me, what I talked with the mayor about was in the future and I'll do this with all the council members too. I'll have it in writing. If, you know, that way we can look back and make sure that, I think the one thing that I want to make clear on this one though is that there are very few times where an individual member of this body or the mayor has authority outside the council. Most of what you do, you do as a council. With respect to the housing authority, that is one of the rare times where the mayor serves as the, the only individual who is responsive to both those appointments and those removals. I would suggest though, as I would every council member, that we make each other aware of the actions that were taken. And so in the future, I'm going to have all of these interactions be in writing. That way there's no question. And if you do make that request in the future, any council member does, I'm able to provide the written document that shows it.
Okay, the next one is the open record acts. Citizens were charged for open record acts. Who, who requests the open record acts for you to do?
That came from the mayor.
Okay. Did the mayor get approval from the council to do that?
I, I don't believe, I, I, I'm not aware.
Open, open records for what?
And maybe, maybe a specific councilman. I believe if you're referring to the request for documents from the housing authority, yes sir, that was at the request of the mayor.
Mayor, what would you request documents that the council didn't know about?
I requested documents for meeting minutes.
Let's see, this has a- This is a request that you asked, pass that down to the attorney and let him read them out to the public. Read that request, start it from the top.
This was done prior to the investigation that I was asked to hold.
So, so Councilman, this is not the request that my office made?
That's what you, that, that's all the request that I got from the housing authority that Mayor Bailey asked for. So he shouldn't have asked about the request of the-
Yes. I can, I can ask for those records at any time. It's an open records request, just like a citizen can ask for those records at any time, so.
But we had to pay her.
No, pay who? We didn't pay the housing authority.
We paid them eighty-seven dollars for this request. Eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents.
I have not seen any records from them.
I have documentation of it.
You show it to me then. Bring it to me and show it to me. Cause I haven't seen any bills from them and I haven't seen any, any records. There's no records being given to, to me who, who was the asking person for that, so. And it needs to come directly to me. Our internet was restored just a few minutes ago and we were able to access the bill you identified yesterday. Our system shows that zero point five hours were spent. Oh, this was the records for, they've never requested that. This, this was the one that you requested for the meeting minutes back in like May or June, or actually February. Yeah, so. Yeah, and I can request those records.
So why is the attorney requesting, like we didn't ask for that?
Because the city administrator did not get them prior to my hearing and investigation. The city attorney said, once I told him that I had requested them multiple times, he said he would send a letter to them.
As the mayor, you, you're supposed to let all councilmen know what's going on. So why wouldn't we know?
I, I disagree with that. I disagree with that.
City Attorney, for the mayor to do anything, he's got to get approval from the mayor and the council?
As I-
We're a strong former council, not weak former mayor. He's just chair of meeting.
As I, yeah, as I stated ordinarily, yes, but there are certain items such as appointment to the housing authority removal that lies solely with the mayor.
That's no problem with that. He's still now supporting that he did something he should have.
He, he, yes, I, I did that. I approved that, so.
Let me, can I, can I just say something?
Yes, sir.
I know you've been asking for some open record request items. If the housing authority board appointment lies with the mayor. So Mayor, why don't you get with the appointees that sits on these boards that you have appointed? Let them know the things that you're asking for and not received and then get them to give it to you.
I have. I've talked to the chairperson twice before the meet, before I did the hearings back in February. So I spoke to him twice. I've asked him since then to have the meeting minutes so we could have them at City Hall. And I've talked to Xena, the office manager, and I've also talked to Ms. Burns, who could not find all of her previous meeting minutes, but could give me the, the current ones. And so, yes, I've talked to them, but they just haven't given it to me yet, so. Alright. Anything else? Moving forward. Councilman Mahoney?
Yes, Mayor, Council. First, let me congratulate Will Long. I've had some reservations, but as we all know, we live in a democratic society where the votes are not at the table. It doesn't happen. However, I want to be the first one to congratulate you. I'm going to work along with you as much as I can. Anything that I can do, I will do because I care about the citizens of the city of Washington. I care about the progress that we're gonna make.
Thank you.
However, there is, it is some house cleaning that we need to do tonight. It's behind us so we can move forward. On October the fourteenth, well first, chip housing update, have we already closed out the housing, the chip housing?
We have three houses closed out with a hundred and, a hundred thousand, one hundred and twenty-two dollars. And that's three of the houses and we've got the fourth one that should be closed out by next month. Looking at probably seventy to eighty thousand dollars for that one. So Crystal has really jumped on that gun, that, that ball and got it rolling and got these houses back to us, so. And there looks like she said there's probably gonna be some other funds that were left over that she may be able to try to get, but she's trying to get all the paperwork together now to see exactly how much, so. So yeah, our chip houses are almost all done and she's getting ready to apply for the, for the chip grant for twenty twenty-five, so.
Last, last month, could I have a city council meeting?
Mr. Mahoney, I'm sorry. Was that the close of the, close out of that, about the chip housing? Because Mr. Mayor, I similarly asked for an update and I want to make sure, and we don't have to cross that bridge when I get there.
Yeah, same thing.
So-
Yeah, so it's one house that's left and-
One house left?
Right. It's one house left. And as the mayor just said, it's one hundred thousand, one hundred and twenty-two dollars with another seventy or eighty thousand to be collected on the last house that needs to be-
Right. And then there'll be some funds left over that Crystal's trying to figure out exactly how much is left over that she can draw down from them, so. So we're getting close, yeah.
Okay. So what does that program income dollar amount look like? I, I don't need an exact figure, but what does that look like? Of what it should look like? You can kind of-
It was, go ahead. It was on your previous mayor, so I don't know exactly, so.
Yeah, so last time I looked at the program income, we had like somewhere around four hundred and some thousand dollars, forty-three, three, four hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars in the program income. Adding this hundred thousand and the rest that's gonna come in, that should put us probably right, five fifty, six hundred thousand.
Okay.
So, somewhere there, five eleven or plus. So yeah, somewhere there.
And so tho- those dollars are sitting in a separate account and can only be used for what?
Acquiring property, addressing blight noises and dilapidated property and chip housing, new construction.
Yeah, and this is-
In the past case that we, they've used it for, was, was hands on Washington, we're using owner occupied we had.
Okay.
Yeah. And that's why we were moving, wanted to move forward with land banking too, I think. So we could buy land and we could, we could do more with it, so yeah.
Well, also, I, I definitely wanted to insert that we need to start looking at owner occupied opportunities also. And let's, Councilman Mahoney, if you don't mind, we'll get together and talk about that because there was a couple of residents that asked me to also raise that concern and I see it on your agenda, so we'll just share notes and make sure that we begin to talk about owner occupied, what we can do with those program income dollars and how we can get, get to moving on that because it's just been sitting idle for the past, what, two, three years?
Yeah, I think-
As far as I can tell, yeah.
The biggest takeaway when we can talk about using the money is actually making sure that our seniors that probably want the money, need the most work done to the house, that their taxes are clear. That's, that's one indicator. And the other one is that they don't own no other property.
Yeah.
Those two things off the bat were disqualified, disqualified for the get going.
Well, if you remember a couple of years ago, I, I did propose that we do a housing think tank or something of that nature, a housing committee that will look at the need for housing. So yes, I know these dollars are, are specific and you can't do certain things and you can do certain things. So I agree. Let's make sure we start moving this meter now and making sure that we make the best of this program income. And I'm not saying take a certain amount. That may be what we come to, but we really need to get some individuals to help guide us through this process and begin to utilize those dollars. If it's buying more property and things of that nature, I'm all for that. But to sit there and let that meter stay still for the past three, four years, we need to move on that. So I'll be following up with you, Councilman Mahoney, to talk about how we can start moving that.
Yes, and I'm, I'm more than willing to form a committee using council members and employees to work on how we can best use this money and how we can move forward with chip grants. I don't, I, I was very disappointed when I came in where the chip grant was and, and all the paperwork that had not been done. So I don't want us to ever fall back into that loop again, so. If you two would like to sit on that committee, I'm more than welcome to put you on.
We already have a get board.
Get board, yeah. So, yeah. Get team, so yeah.
And I think that where it should really lies because that's what the get team is designed for, to identify the housing. And one of the things that came up at the actual conference was also addressing with our seniors to making sure that they have wills put in place. A lot of the property is, is being lost because lack of a will is being, being placed for our seniors. So I would recommend that, you know, get with the get team and that the get, get team put out an assessment to kind of evaluate where we are with houses. I know Ms. Bacon did a lot of work with housing. That people that acquired, a lot of ones that was on the list couldn't get funded because they didn't have the property in their name and they had other property that they actually owned.
Well, I know that since Jocelyn Aries left, the get team, they kind of hit it and missed, hit and missed, hit and missed. So we really need to, as you say, get together and I'm not sure if there's a District Two council member that's a part of that get team. I'm not sure, but I agree with you. Let's, let's really start moving that meter.
Yes, I totally agree.
With the new administrator on board and I know that Christie is also leading some of that charge, but to get a, a list of who all on that get team and move forward with that and maybe get a council member from District One, District Two also to be a part of that.
Okay, we can do that. Alright. What'd you got?
Next, I will ask me to, October the fourteenth meeting, there was an agenda item that was placed on for action item and it was outlined for city administrator. And I think, Councilman Anderson, I think that was your topic. I do want to caution us that we need to live by the policies that we set. And the last month motion, it caught me off guard. It caught citizens off guard. It caught, it caught my colleagues. It caught us all off guard. Had we known, we could have had a lot of conversation. If Will Long was gonna be the guy, he's gonna be the guy. We could have talked through this contract. We could have talked through some of the things that we should have cleaned up before we actually entered into the contract. But I just want to caution us and remind us that on the form that we took a policy, that we created a policy that all of us adhere to and go by the guidelines of, it says proposed and action item. Check box and a vote gets to be taken. State the exact motion verbatim and it will be voted upon. So I just say in the future, let's make sure that we live by the policy. Let's, you know, call balls, balls, strike, strikes. Let's make sure that it's outlined, whatever any council member or the mayor can table, put on the agenda topic. You know, I was, I was, I was caught off guard with what happened last month. And it could have been a lot of conversation that we could have had before it, it made it to Monday night city council meeting.
And I, and I would like to ask a question on this too because I, I noticed that there was a Facebook post about, about discussion items going into action items under the previous city administrator. He informed me on that January meeting that discussion items had to be talked about before it could be made a motion. Unfortunately, there's no policy and procedure about that that I could find anywhere. Is there one that you know of?
Well, that's how we came up with this.
That's, well, that, but I mean, there's items on there tonight that are motion items that we haven't discussed before, so. And, and that meeting, it was told to me by Councilman Cullors that you have to discuss it and then make a motion, I think, or, and then I asked Jerry about it and he said, yeah. So is there a policy there or it's not in our ordinances?
Well, it's, it's, it's a, it's a policy and that's why I say, I think that, you know, house cleaning, housekeeping for all of us. Just make sure that we do it the way that we created the policy to do. And that was to create transparency where we can have conversation.
And I agree. And that's, if that's, if that's policy's there, if it's not, then we want, we need to implement it, then we need to implement it, so.
We all know that when the meetings, the minutes used to be handled, the meetings was rolled up one way and redacted by the city administrator and rewritten another way, so.
But that's, we've changed that now, so I think the city, the meeting minutes are a lot more clear because we're using recording devices and-
We can't find it.
Yeah, yeah, that's, and that's a good possibility because there's a lot of stuff we've lost in that, in those meeting minutes, but.
I'd like to say something right here. Going back to January meeting when you first got elected mayor, you stated that the way you was going to do it. So all of a sudden now you guys don't know what you stated?
No, I stated what, I stated what the city administrator at the time said, so.
No, you stated what she wanted to go forward with.
I stated what the city administrator said, so.
See the difference in what he does now and then.
Okay.
Totally.
Moving forward. Go ahead.
Moving forward.
Also, I think this will take care of my item in terms of the proper process in hiring our administrator. What I'm concerned about, not confused, concerned about, is that we did not follow proper process. And what I mean by that is, I did have a conversation with the attorney. I know the motion. It was a motion to give the mayor the authority to enter into a contract or enter into negotiation with Mr. Long, with the new person. But it is to my understanding, according to our policies and procedures, that that contract should have been brought back to the city council for discussion. And even Mr. Mayor, you stated, it is on the video at our last meeting, at the end of our last meeting when you broke the tie, is that you would bring it back to council so we can have that conversation. And in all fairness also, I made the comment and you asked me, Councilman Hill, are you sure you don't want to go to executive session? You remember that? And, and so I left it there because again, I was under the impression that you would look at the contract, get with the attorney, send your contract over and then bring it back to council for another vote. And I just think that that's in all fairness, not only to this council, but also to the citizens of Washington.
That, that was not the motion though. I, I clearly asked twice, did anybody want to put a salary? I, I asked once about the salary and I asked twice about executive session. And I made him specify the motion that, and I sent you the contract before we entered into it saying that me and Will had come up with an agreement. This was our contract. And, and then that's when I got the email back saying that we didn't follow policy, but we did, so.
Mr. Mayor, I received the contract when you sent it out the day, I think it was Sunday, that Sunday afternoon. And I saw it then. So what I'm saying is again, I was, and, and Council Attorney, you can help me with this. I was under the impression, Councilman Anderson made the motion that we give the authority to the mayor to negotiate and the mayor said himself that he would bring the con, he would enter into a contract, not enter into a contract, but he would start negotiation, get the contract and then bring it back to council. So that's where I think we dropped the ball.
On Thursday, October thirty-first at one forty-eight PM, I emailed the council. See, we, we have reached an agreement to move forward with the hiring of Will Long as city administrator. Attached is the contract which I provided to him today and awaiting his signature and we'll sign off on it. I know that this is not what everyone wanted, but unlike the previous administrator, I asked that all of you please sign, please give him a chance. We have a contract. We will change policies and procedures and never fall for what previously happened. I do ask moving forward that all evaluations of his performance be completed by all, as there was nothing from District One in Jerry's files. So at six months, we will be evaluating his performance. Also, as acting city administrator, I have been working with another personnel issue. That was on October thirty-first.
When did you send that out?
That was on October thirty-first. It went to every city council member.
When did the contract starts?
The contract was not signed until November the first.
When, when did you want him to start?
November the fourth.
November the first or fourth?
Fourth.
Okay. You sent us a contract on the weekend. I'm not sure.
That was Thursday. That was a Thursday. I can't help it that you don't check your email daily, as I do.
But you can also call, you can also call.
I did, I did send out a text. Let me tell you the text.
Mr. Mayor, this is just in discussion. That's all. I'm not, I'm not, Mr. Long, please, please.
No, he's not involved.
I, I just want to make sure for the record's sake, and I'm asking the attorney, I would be in a better position that if the mayor had have brought the contract back to the city council and asked for a vote to move forward with it. Attorney, can you give me some counsel on that? Attorney, can you give me some counsel on that?
So, I think your question, and I'll, I'll, I'll just answer out loud and you tell me if I get it, if I get your answer or not. Okay? So, the action that was approved four to three by the council at the October meeting would very likely authorize the chair, the mayor to enter into contract with a person for the city manager. On the terms as agreed to by the mayor. I would also suggest that, um, with respect to contracts, especially those involving city manager, in an ideal situation, it would be voted on by council. The question here is whether or not the council gave the approval of, to the mayor to enter into such agreement. And it does appear that he has. But to your point and to your question and, and moving forward, I, I would certainly in the future that the council may want to consider authorizing the mayor to sign until they've seen the contract.
And, and I'm sorry, Councilman, and I'll, I'll zip it right here. Uh, again, Mr. Mayor, we, I'm trying my very best to make sure we endorse and support your action and what you do. Make sure we, we, we work together collaboratively. It just did not appear that you had everything above water so that there would be no controversy. To come here tonight and introduce to me as a sitting councilman the city administrator. That is not, that, that's, that's not good. But again, so, Councilman.
I'm sorry.
I, I, I just want to say for the record to make sure that I feel that we should have came, that contract should have been brought back to council for a vote, mayor and council for a vote.
Well, let me, let me, and I have my. I feel like the, I, we asked you to negotiate the contract. And I'm going to tell you the danger behind what just happened. The danger would be if, and I said that you would have done it, but if it had have happened. If the mayor had offered a three hundred or five hundred thousand dollar contract. And none of us seen it, none of us know about it, and we will be binded to the contract. There was also, um, section two point six eight that was actually in the, um, was a recommendation by our city attorney to remove out of the contract before we went forward entering a new contract, would have relieved the city the burden of paying a six month severance. In the event that, right now, um, because this contract has been entered, good, bad, or indifferent. If Mr. Long was to leave after the one year probation period, we'll be on the hook for half that salary. And that number did come back at a hundred and forty thousand dollars and a five hundred dollar car allowance. And not only does the public want to know, but I want to know, how did we land at the hundred and forty thousand dollar number? I think that, that, you know, our last past city administrator, um, he only made, um, one twenty and he got us in almost two million dollars a mess that we see and trying to figure out now. But there was a negotiation and there was an offer and you enter us into a contract. Uh, and I, and for the record, you read down below the email, I cautioned you before you did it, asked you to not do it. I asked you to seek the advice for the city attorney to make sure that we have everything in place before we went forward with it. And there was council members that said, no, Matt, go along and offer the contract, give them the contract. Now look where we in. We talked about approving a hundred and forty thousand dollar contract and we talked about some of the items that was recommended by our city attorney that wasn't even removed out of the contract. So, what is we learning from the mistakes that we made?
Well, number one, he didn't, it's not a six month, um, severance package for him. It's three months at currently, which we can change at his next contract into the year. Um, so.
We can change, but why we didn't change it? Why didn't we change it?
We have to change the ordinance before we do that. The contract, we'd have to change the ordinance before we could do that. So.
Well, I, I just feel like we should have pumped the brakes a little bit. It was, it, it, it bothered me that some of the things that I'm talking about right now, our city attorney did not know anything about.
Sorry. Uh, he, he was the one that sent me the contract and he was the one that proofed it for us. So.
Yeah, well, the language of the contract also says mayor.
Counsel.
No, it doesn't say mayor, council.
No, it doesn't.
It says the mayor.
Right, which is shitty.
That the, the, um, city administrator answers to the mayor. He doesn't answer to the mayor.
Correct.
He answers to the mayor and council.
And council.
So, that contract, it, it needs to, it, it should have been amended before we went forward with it and spelled out that language.
And, and, and to that point, uh, we have had, um, several conversations that our attorney had been advising us for the past, uh, two months on that particular language. And that's why we are now getting this forensic audit and, and getting all that done. So.
Right. But I, I, I asked the question and this might, this, and I'm done with it because it is what it is. And I think everybody here should understand and learn the process. That the same way y'all want to hold District One accountable, y'all need to hold all of us accountable.
I agree. I agree.
Doing good business, we're not doing good justice. We're approving contracts that none of us know anything about. And the votes are what the votes are. The mayor has the power to break the tie. He broke the tie. Will Long is that guy? And that's what we got to live with. But I do want to, I do want to know, I want an explanation of how did we land at a hundred and forty thousand dollars with a five hundred dollar car allowance every month?
That was, uh, recommendations from Sheri, uh, with G M A. Uh, and if you look at the new salary survey, she actually recommended a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, but I wouldn't go that high.
She, she recommended.
She said that most, most city administrators of this size would, would, somewhere around a hundred and sixty, a hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
When I, when I say a hundred and seventy thousand, I, I would probably go along with that where there was been a city administrator that had worked for a number of years, had a lot of experience, had a lot of know-how, but I don't think that a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, even a hundred and forty thousand dollars for the city of Washington outside that, that's what a new person coming in, working in the capacity of the city administrator should have made. But that was your.
That was my call.
And Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Um, our contract with, um, Ms. Sheri Bailey as a, a consultant, G M A consultant, that she also report to council and mayor. And that's, that's all we're saying. That's, that's what I'm saying is.
That's a minor change. So, that's nothing. So, I mean, he knows, he knows who he reports to. So.
If, if you, you, you carrying this load by yourself and we, the council, this council here had nothing to do with it. I don't know about, I'm not speaking for other councils, but I had nothing to do with it. So, um, just want to make sure, uh, for the record, that council member Hill, District One, did not have any input in moving forward, but I'm ready to move forward with our administrator. And going to do everything I can to support and, uh, build a relationship for the citizens of District One and the citizens of Washington.
And that's all I can ask you to do is just give him a chance. I think he's going to do great things for Washington. He's already impressed me with several, several of the items that he's come up with, and I think he's going to do great things for the city. So. Anything else, Councilman Mahoney? Moving forward. Councilman Anderson.
Uh, okay. Excuse me. Um, my discussion item is listed as Dr. Gargre land donation. So, let me elaborate on that for the council and the citizens. Dr. Gargre was an individual, is an individual that donated the twenty seven acres to the city of Washington. And I'll defer probably what, two to three years ago, I guess?
Yes.
Okay. And that's, the land is out off of Andrews Drive in the bypass, which is now under development by Mark Herbert Holmes. It's called Washington Commons and that's the new housing development. And this benevolent, generous individual has come forward to the city again and said, hey, here's about forty acres. I'll be glad to donate to the city. And it's in somewhat close proximity to the other thr, others, right?
Fish tails off that and back over to Andrew Drive in Baltimore.
Okay. So, the, uh, one discussion item is this is happening. Uh, I personally think it's a great deal. I don't see any downside to that. Uh, now, the issue that this is discussion and then when we segue into the, uh, action items, I have one and I'll go ahead and just, just, uh, just, we'll discuss it and then we'll, within, when I get to the action item, I'll make a, a motion. But part of this is, uh, the, I guess, the, the request by the donor that the city cover the taxes for the land for twenty twenty four. And going back and researching what we did, whenever that was, three or four years ago, we did the same thing. We covered the taxes for the year in which it was donated, gifted to the city. So, that's the discussion which will lead to an action item. Does that, does that describe the issue pretty well?
Yes, yes. That's good.
I'd like to know something on this property that he's given. Have you cut the trees off?
Uh, the question is, did we cut the trees off of it? I don't think so.
Are no trees been cut off?
I do not know that for sure. I'll defer.
I, I, I don't think so.
I don't think so because.
When you say this land okay now?
It, it goes from the back of where the previous land that he gave, where Herbert Holmes is, goes back around behind Mike Thornton truck and all that.
That property, the trees have been cut off. How much the taxes now going to pay off that property?
I don't know exactly. I had a discussion with Jimmy Toto today about that and there again, I'll, I'll defer because I don't have definitive answers. But his comment to me was, uh, that it's, it's not developed land. So, he did not think the taxes would be, you know, excessive, somewhere around, and this is an estimate, guesstimate, somewhere around a thousand dollars for the annual taxes.
Mayor, I, I'll make a motion that, um, we move forward with the taxes, um, to move, if he, if he's ready, move forward with it.
Yeah, he, uh, we were gonna, he was gonna be here on the fifteenth, but he couldn't because of conflict. He's going to be the twenty ninth. And I'll send all of you, all of you out an email once I get the date and time specific.
So, he, he's coming here.
He's going to come here. Yes, he's going to come here.
Yeah, I think it'd be nice that we do something to say, uh, show our appreciation of, that he's given this land donation, which is by, what, total of sixty?
So, we got a motion from Councilman Mahoney.
So. So.
Do we have a second?
We're going to do an investigation of how much, how much taxes actually. Well, I'll, I'll say this. Let me make, let me, let me clear it up. I'll make a motion that we pay the taxes up to, you know, five thousand dollars.
Okay. All right. Five thousand dollars.
Not to exceed.
Five thousand.
Not to exceed five thousand. Okay. All right. Kind of motion.
How many acres is that? Forty?
Forty.
Forty, yeah.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Second, my Councilman Fisher. Any further discussion?
Discussing. Once we, we, uh, receive this property, what we're going to do with it because the comment that we thought was supposed to be for low income people, they ain't going to be able to afford those apartments that they building. So, what we're going to do with this property?
We'll continue to move forward with housing. So, yeah. And he actually had, he has a couple of spots of land back there that he would like to see either a, a service station or a convenience store come up on. So, um, a small grocery store, something like that. So, um, that's what he's looking for in the future. Or even maybe a restaurant. So.
But to be clear, to be clear, the city is not obligated to develop the, the property in any way. There's, there's no stipulation on that. Okay.
Uh, Councilman Andy, may I?
Go ahead.
Have any conversation with this owner and, and other council members? Have, have there been any conversation about the moving forward with the property and what the property could be used for and just some ideals? Some thoughts, some, just some conversation?
Most of his conversation been with Jimmy Toto about what, what zoning is and how he could zone it. Cause he wants to do a, like I said, a, a small gas station or convenience store or some type of small supermarket on the backside over by Andrews Drive, uh, right near Baltimore. So, the, most of it's just been about zoning to making sure that if he donates this land, that it's not zoned out to where he couldn't do something like that. So, uh, I mean, anybody that wants to donate land to the city, I think is, is a good thing. So, um, so. But yeah, no, no other, not, unless it was before my time, because they, they were talking about this when Jerry was here. Uh, and I just kind of got drug into it as city administrator. So.
Well, I, I think, Mr. Mayor, and, and, and definitely I'm supporting this, but I think with our new administrator, kind of give him, get his feet wet a little bit and let's hold some conversation about, uh, with this owner and kind of see what we jumping into before we just jump.
Well, like I said, there's no stipulation on what we do with the property. We can hold that property. We can land bank it. We can, you know, use it for low income or, or more apartments. We can do. Uh, there's nothing, nothing.
Four or five different thoughts and, and I'm all for it, you know, but I just want to make sure we have some type of, of vision where we headed with it. And we getting ready to spend forty thousand dollars, up to forty thousand dollars.
Forty thousand. Where's forty? Five thousand.
Five thousand dollars? Yeah. Okay.
I don't, I don't think the property taxes are going to come near that much for one year. So, yeah.
Well, that's the five thousand dollars we could give these young teenagers, uh, group here. But I'm not saying no. I'm just saying I would like to know more as to what this venture is going to entail before we make a decision.
Well, Mayor, for, for clarity, he's giving us the land for us to find somebody to develop it, not the city developing it. We hear a lot about, um, businesses, bringing businesses here now, just like, um, Mrs., um, uh, Ms. Ween said tonight. But we, that's one of the things that you need. You need land.
Yeah.
You need to have, um, sites to actually offer proposals. And, you know, if he's going to give us forty acres and we already got one developer who has developed, is committed developing, putting two hundred houses and the, housing apartments mixed use in the one area. I don't think like we, just certain things, I just feel like we shouldn't drag on. Like, we're not going to be the ones that develop it. We're going to be the ones going out saying, we got forty acres. What can you bring here to our community and asking the bottom of community what they would like to see in that area?
And, and all, and I, and I totally agree with you. The only point that I'm making again is, do we have to make that decision tonight? Have there been conversations with other council members to, um, to, to, to have some thoughts?
He, he's going to donate the land. The, the only thing is, we just have to pay the taxes. So, that's it. So.
I get it. But have that been conversation with other council members other than Councilman?
Not that I'm aware of. No.
That's what I'm saying. Do we have to make this decision tonight? I'm all for making sure that this go through. But Councilman Andy, is this a situation that we can say, hey, let's have more discussion or you want to move on this tonight?
No, I, I think from what I understand, we need to move on tonight because we're coming towards the end of the year and we have to commit. We don't have to write a check. We just have to commit that we will pay the taxes for twenty twenty four. And it needs to be done in this calendar year. And, and he's coming, the, when is he coming, Bruce?
Twenty ninth, I think is what he said.
Of November. So, I think we as a council say, yes, we'll vote that we will cover the taxes. And we'll figure out, and Councilman Mahoney, she says to be, to be logical about it, says let's vote tonight that we will be up to and just pick a number that is going to be well within that number, right?
Yeah. And then he has to, he has to have.
We already, and this is my last comments on it. We, we got an audit, a forensic audit that we're, uh, uh, waiting on. We have a new city administrator and now we're going to put something else on our plate that we don't know full details of what it's going to entail. So, that, that's all, that's, that's the point that I'm making. Um, Councilman.
Where does this money come from? What, what part of money this come, come from, to pay those taxes?
It'll come from admin.
Admin again.
Well, you could actually use it from.
You can use it from.
From program, um, program income.
Yeah. You can use, there's several different things we can use, we can get money from. So, got a motion, got a second. Any further discussion? Councilman Fisher? Councilman Hill?
Dispute.
Councilman Gunner? Councilman Coler's new. Councilman Anderson?
Yes.
Councilman Mahoney?
Yes.
All right. Four to two, motion passes. All right. Councilman Fisher?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Every, uh, three years, every municipality in Georgia is required to have a public water system sanitary survey. Uh, ours was performed on October the twenty second. Uh, and, uh, the, uh, list of things that they found, it was, uh, in this thirty four page report. The, the main item that I want to emphasize is that our water meets safe drinking state levels. The state levels for safe drinking water, our water meets those levels. A lot of the things that they have found were listed as minor deficiencies and recommendations. There was no findings that had to have immediate action taken. However, uh, Greg and Chris, uh, this survey was done on October twenty second. They have till October fifteenth to submit an action plan on all of these things. And I've talked with Greg and, and Chris this week and they have, uh, agreed that, that they're not going to have any problems meeting those recommendations. There were two recommendations that did stand out. Number seven was a minimum standard requires a particle counting device on each filter. And we currently don't have any particle counters. and we currently don't have any particle counters on, at either of our plants. Greg said that that was something that we probably ought to do because in the very near future, the state is probably gonna start requiring some level of particle, or particulate in our water. The other thing was, uh, access to Lake Wall and City Holding Pond for recreational use has direct access to Skull Show's water treatment plant. Another fence should be placed around the water treatment plant to deter entry to the plant. Greg said that, uh, and I believe that's the, the pond now that, uh, the, the city employees are fishing in. Is that correct?
Yes, I think, yes, I believe so, yes.
Uh, Greg did say that, uh, a fence can be put up that will still allow the employees to go fishing in that pond, but, uh, there is definitely some concern that anybody has access to the water treatment plant. Those were, uh, minor deficiencies. In the recommendations board, it was recommended that the Aonia Water Treatment Plant have a generator on-site to ensure there is no interruption of service. Uh, I think the, the events that have happened in the last couple of weeks, last month, have shown us that we really don't want a interruption in our water service. Uh, I talked with Greg, and I think he, I believe he said he's got three hundred thousand dollars in the budget for the purpose of purchasing a generator for that plant. The other recommendation was that the Aonia Water, Raw Water Station be equipped with a generator to ensure there is no interruption of service, and Greg told me that he's been working on that grant for about two years, and that that grant is about to come to fruition, so that, uh, generator will be purchased and installed in that plant. Other than that, uh, some of you may know, uh, this, our water department is not being real accountable for all the water that they're treating and dispensing. We're losing a lot of water. Right now, there is a, a, uh, survey team here, and you've probably seen them riding around with Greg. They're in orange shirts, and they're walking around in the street putting devices that says ultrasonic, or ultrasound leak detection that they are running on every main line in the city to, to find these leaks. Uh, Greg said they've already encountered several, and, uh, they're getting with Chris Rounds, who's the water department, uh, to get those repaired, but, uh, Greg is feeling very hopeful that they're gonna be able to help us cut down on the amount of treated water that we're losing.
All right, thank you.
A quick question, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, give us the date that the suspense is. I thought, I thought I heard you say fifteen October, which has already passed. What's the date of...
The, the date of the inspection was October twenty-second. He has till November fifteen.
November fifteenth.
Right.
All right, thank you. Uh, Councilman Hill?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, as relates to the, um, report on the housing, we coupled that with Councilman Mahoney's, uh, report, but also we added to the agenda, um, the piece about the, I think you have it in your, I passed out. A couple of months ago, the U R A asked and allowed, um, four E to occupy the building, the block, block building there at the old Gordon Street, and, uh, there are some things that need to be done before they would move forward in making sure that they're able to cover or that it's worth to do. And what happened is, we had the electrical inspected, and, uh, we also, um, asked that the water and sewer be inspected. When I talked to you, Mr. Mayor, about that, um, I got, you asked me to get with Chris Round. Chris Round said that he could not do it until you get approval from the council. Um, I talked to the committee members, Councilman Coleridge and Councilman, uh, Gunner, about approving, asking that to go through. Uh, the U R A just do not have the funds to pay for a water tap or an inspection to make sure that that is, uh, worth putting money into that building, and so I'm asking that the city council approve, um, the water department going out and doing a water inspection at the blue block building there at Gordon Street, and making sure that it's okay.
So, do they need a tap put in too, then, right?
Yes, they need a tap.
So, okay, so tap and do the inspection to make sure the water's running?
Yes, yes. And I think it was something like, uh, five to seven thousand dollars to put in a tap, um, but I just don't see us asking the, um, four E youth group to do that, and, uh, nor the, uh, U R A. And I'm asking that the city will accept, um, that responsibility, um, to do something good for the community.
Okay.
That's my motion.
Second.
I've got a motion, got a second. Discussion?
So, is, is the water tap already open?
There's no tap to that building, I don't think, so.
I don't think it's, it's, they, they got water to the boxing building, and that's what, uh, Chris Round said that he would pull off of that, I think. But from what I understand, there is no water going into the building so we can see what pipes need to be replaced and all that kinda stuff.
So, would they, they, they would need actual pipes ran into the building and sinks and bathrooms and all that in that building, correct?
Yeah, pipes are going there, but we just need to do an, you need to do an inspection to kinda see, and, and run water to the building itself. So, as of right now, no water is going to the building.
Yeah, but that's what I'm asking. There's no, there's no way, we can run the water to the building, but there's nothing inside that they can use. They're, they're gonna have to plum the inside of that building, correct?
No, no, they're not gonna have to.
So, it's, it's had water before?
Yeah, they've had water in everything there before.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, even in electrical. Everything was there before.
Okay.
They just need the city, uh, um, water and sewer department...
Okay, gotcha.
...approval from this body. That's what I'm asking.
Okay. So, we got a motion by Councilman Hill, a second by Councilman Coleridge. Any further discussion? Yes, sir?
So, this, so the U R A owns the building?
U R A owns the building, yes.
Okay. But they're requiring us, asking us to, to, to seven thousand dollars to prepare to it?
To, to bring water to the building.
How much is that, what, three thousand?
Well, what I was told, that the tap may cost anywhere from five to seven thousand dollars, if that be the case.
If it had water before, it should still, there should still be a tap there, so, yeah. All right. So, we got a motion, a second. Any further discussion?
I've, I've got a question. So, the U R A owns the building. Is the U R A allowing the four E to use the building?
Correct.
Is that right? Okay, and they're gonna use it, uh, for what?
You, the four E is gonna use it for youth services, youth programs?
Youth services?
Yes.
Okay. And this is, at, at one point in time, two or three years ago, the city allowed them to use the, the building at Booker Park, right?
Correct.
That four E was using that. And then that, that terminated, and so now they're gonna use that building for something similar, for their, for all their youth activities.
Yeah.
U R A owns it, and they want us to cover the inspection and the water?
Yes.
Is that right?
Okay. All right, just got a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Can I get a vote? Councilman Fisher?
I approve.
Councilman Hill?
Approve.
Councilman Gunner?
Approve.
Councilman Anderson?
Yes.
Oh, Councilman, oh, unanimous, thank you. All right. All right, Councilman Gunner?
Mr. Archie Akery brought something to my attention. He, he was, um, requesting maybe we could come up with some kind of workforce reentry and second chance program, um, for people that are getting out, that, you know, wanna get back into workforce, that, um, just give them the opportunity to get back into the workforce. Um, I, I looked through several different things. We've got some federal bonding programs, job seeker services, the work opportunity tax credit. So, there's, there's lots of other things that, you know, we can work with. I'm gonna, um, give these to Crystal and let her work with those, which is, is a possibility that we could entertain, you know, working with these, you know, people, um, to put them back into workforce. But we actually have this already in place because with, um, Wilks's lumberyard, part of his grant is to hire workforce people that are getting out to put them back into the program.
Yeah.
So, we've actually got a wonderful program that's, that's already in place, that, um, we can entertain these as well, but just to let everybody know that this, this is gonna happen. Um, and we already have that, you know, in the works. So, as soon as he gets up and running, a lot of his people will have to be, I mean, they require, he's required to hire workforce people out of, you know, jails and things, because that's part of his grant that he's receiving. So, just to let everybody aware of that.
Okay.
Also, on that note, I think he also wanted to know that the city could be a part of this program to hire people to back to work.
Right.
So, not just that.
Okay, all right.
As I make a motion to authorize the mayor to send a letter to the Georgia D O T to request that they move forward with our request to effect what they consider, or they, they term a road swap of the portion of Spring Street, which is also known as Highway forty-seven going to Sharon. And the south bypass, and this is in order to route all the heavy commercial traffic via the bypass, not through the center of town. So, that's the desired end state. And what Rob Leverett told me today was, he would, he would suggest that we do not just a letter, but a resolution, and that's something that we have to approve as the council, that we all agree to this, because it gets into the D O T's bureaucracy, and we're asking them to expedite it, and he, he said he's never gotten anything that, uh, codifies it as an official request from the council and mayor, that we want to do this, and we're not going to change our mind with this, and this is something that we all want to happen. So, that's it. So, that's the motion as I just read. So, I'll make that motion.
I, I second, I second that.
Okay.
Question?
I, one, one discussion point. This, this would not interfere with the downtown businesses or the businesses within the city that get large trucks like food and supplies and stuff like that, so it wouldn't interfere with that, so.
Yeah, one more elaboration. The D O T approves the, like, the G P S movement of all trucks, all commercial trucks. They get a route given to them, and they've all got it on their G P S and their, you know, their digital approval. So, that's why, if, I mean, it's, we have seen it for the five years I've been back. It, one just happened yesterday. They had this truck coming through trying to make the nine, the nine-degree turn, because that's what it said the route to go. He backed up about six times, and finally gave up and went through the town. And then it, we've had several cases in the last year where these trucks have been trying to negotiate that nine-degree turn and backed up and hit somebody's car on the other side of the street. So, yeah, it, I mean, it's, it seemed to be very intuitive to be something easy to get approved, but it hasn't been that easy. So, this is this, you know, we're moving forward slowly, hopefully.
One other thought. Go ahead, go ahead, Councilman.
Okay.
Um, I know that Councilman Andy, I definitely support this. Uh, I know you said you give the mayor authority, but now that we have an administrator, so you may want to say, give the mayor and the administrator...
Well, uh, and I'll defer to the lawyer on this, if I could. Adam, uh, the resolution that, to be approved by the city council mayor to, to a resolution that goes to the D O T, and I assume there's some, uh, there's some nuances to that, put that resolution, the paperwork of resolution states resolution that is the, is the joint effort. It's, in fact, is, uh, I think the verbiage you used, this is showing the will of the council, the mayor and council.
Correct. And as far as the action item goes to actually get it, uh, delivered, I, I probably have a template of that resolution previously that I can provide. Uh, city of Harlem, within the last two years, had, had made the same action, and I, if, if it's, if so authorized, then I'll provide that to the mayor and make sure the council sees that resolution as well.
In the, in the, in the past, when this, um, idea has came up, um, it kinda came up right before we was doing the housing, um, the housing, um, over there by Andrew.
Yeah, the bypass.
The bypass.
Yeah, yeah, Andrew's truck.
Right, yeah, I understand. But how much is the axonist to put up? Because in the past, it was, I wanna say about a hundred fifty-two hundred thousand dollars of axonist put up. So, is, we...
Does this commit us to that money, is that the question?
It's, it's, it's not part of my motion. It has nothing to do with the commitment of funds to be, to go to the D O T. This is to, to codify that it is the will of the people of Washington to move forward to get this change made. So, I defer to the, to our attorney.
No, I, I would suggest that that would come later. Um, obviously, your request now is for D O T to start the process, and the reason the mayor laughed was that, um, we're talking about a bureaucracy. This is step one in the process. I hope they're all around to see step two, um, but let's, uh, you, you will be provided, uh, a opportunity to obligate if we so choose, but...
So, one more question. If we move forward with the resolution tonight, and it's a grant, and...
What, a grant?
Yeah, is this, is this a grant, this is a grant, right?
No, this is just a request to designate, ask the D O T to designate.
The money, the money that will be, that'll be coming from, D O T is, is, is probably from a grant.
If D O T is gonna participate in the reroute, um, it'd be on those terms. It very well might be a grant at that time.
Yeah, because either they're gonna use federal money, they're gonna use, um, uh, free, free tax money.
I, I think you could facilitate, because I think what you're getting at and what the, the councilman was talking about is there might be some improvements that had to be made as a result of this. Um, and if that is the case, D O T could use money from, you're right, the feds, the state, or maybe ask us to act, ma, uh, make an act in response. You wouldn't be obligated to do that until that time. In other words, you'd be off, you'd be offering to start that process.
Well, the, the reason why I asked the question is because I don't want it to be a grant, and then it's whatever, five hundred thousand dollars, and then they say, well, you gotta put two hundred thousand dollars, and then the two hundred thousand be a deal breaker. Then it's gonna look like we jumped in the boat for a grant that they worked hard to get, to give us to do the project, and then we turned the money down.
Yeah, I think, um, and, and Councilman, I'll defer to you, but, uh, it sounds like from Councilman, um, Mahoney's position, he wanted to see the language of the, of the resolution or the request in order to ensure there's no obligation beyond just the request.
I remember the conversation. It's, it's about a hundred fifty-two hundred thousand dollars.
Well, I mean, with respect to the, what Councilman, um, Anderson's asking for, so...
And, uh, this had, this had been started several years ago, because I know Jerry had, had continued to work on it, uh, but he kinda stalled out, so...
He stalled because of the hundred fifty-two hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, all right. We will, I'll get, uh, you actually go back and look through his emails and stuff and see if we can find that, because I've never heard of that. So, I mean, basically, all they're doing is reroute the traffic, so, uh, if it's a traffic pattern that, you know...
But if we, if, and, and, and that leads to another, and I know it's just down for the night, the night's been long, but if we're putting two hundred houses over there with the idea of doing some more mixed housing, then there may need to be a traffic study that's...
Yeah, may have to be, yeah.
To, you know, divert traffic somewhere else, where it won't impede that, where, um, the, the development is at. And that's probably some of this that we need to, um, have that conversation, you know. If, if it comes down, when it cut across before it gets down to where the housing is, that's gonna be it.
Yeah, very true.
Well, all right, but the, the way this is worded, to, to follow on from the negotiations, discussions over the past two years with our previous city administrator, I, I have never talked to the D O T representative. We had talked about, and, and still have an intention to go down and meet these, the, it's, it's a district D O T engineer down near Sandersville. That's where the, the offices are. And Rob, Representative Rob Leverett, is the, is, is our guy to negotiate with the D O T. So, he is suggesting that we dig this resolution to go to him, because the guy's told him, says, "Hey, we really can't do anything, because I've never got anything that codified the intentions and the, the showing the will of the city that they really wanted to move forward to help, to get the D O T to try to reroute these, these trucks." So, I think, at this time, it's premature to be, we be worried too much about the money, because this is not a commitment, right, Adam?
That's correct. Uh, I think that Councilman Anderson's asking for a, a request from this body to approve a resolution, asking, I think Councilman Mahoney's thinking about what comes next, but...
Yeah, I agree. I mean, we don't wanna...
But I also think that, and I'm speaking for Councilman Mahoney here, but I, I, I think I heard his, there would be, uh, some benefit to him seeing the, the wording of the resolution.
Yeah. Are we gonna get him to put the resolution together, bring it back to, um, to the committee, council next month?
So, I was able to locate the document I was looking for, but if, I'll email it to all the, the council members.
Okay.
And it might need some, some change in based on what you're talking about, but I think that might satisfy.
How about if I, I modify my, my motion to present, to, to ask the city attorney to create the resolution and ask him to coordinate, please, with our district representative to discuss the, the verbiage in the previous conversations, and then bring it back to the council next month. And then we can have a chance, you, I mean, you could, you could route the draft to all of us prior to that.
So, a motion by Councilman Anderson, a second by Councilman Hill. Any further discussion? Councilman Fisher?
Approve.
Councilman Hill?
Approve.
Councilman Gunner?
Yeah.
Councilman Anderson and Councilman Mahoney?
Yes.
Okay, all approved, all right. Moving on. All right, so, did you, we already talked about the land donation. Um, Councilman Coleridge? Councilman Cullors? Do we take action on your land donation? Do we, that land donation? We didn't, we didn't vote on the land donation, do you?
Yeah, we did.
We did? Okay, all right, I thought, I thought we did, so I want to make sure so, okay, all right. Reimbursed investigation? And it's already been reimbursed, though?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so we talked about that. So, okay, Councilman Hill, you want to?
We've already talked about that.
Okay, all right, so.
But also, Mr. Mayor, did we talk in about, did you keep that on your agenda for the fire department, talk about the transfer or the moving of the training facility?
Burn building.
Burn building?
We did not. Did you want to bring that up since you're on that committee?
Yes, since I got it.
Go ahead, go ahead. Yeah, we can add that to, to the agenda. I got an email from CJ earlier today, so, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Fisher and I are on that committee, and we've had, and Andy also, we've had long discussions about trying to beautify just a little bit the old burn building, training center is right behind the Pope Center, and it's an eyesore. So the county have donated a lot on Third Street, and Chief, CJ have also garnered some very good donations in terms of cleaning the lot off. He's also gotten some more promised donation in terms of moving gravel and crushing run and things of that nature. So it's really going to be, I believe it's going to be a really nice facility. There's a lot of work still that need to be done, a lot of things that need to be done. But I want to make sure that I update the council on that piece. From what I understand, I'll let Councilman Fisher talk a little bit here, but from what I understand, to finalize that, to put it all in motion and to get it moved and everything, going to be about $160,000. And so we got to figure out how we can get that money to do it. I don't have a timeline for that, Mr. Mayor. I know that you've also been talking with our fire chief, but he's getting donations from everywhere to get that done.
Yeah. Councilman Fisher, get any?
The original estimate was approximately $160,000, but due to some of the donations, the whole site has already been graded pro bono. It's already taken care of. The, the problem with that situation is those trucks are tremendously heavy and require about a six-inch base of aggregate and about four inches of asphalt because they're going to do training with those vehicles on that spot. So he's already got some volunteers to help. Somebody's going to partially donate the aggregate. Some, most of the trucks that are bringing that in will be volunteered. So in my conversation with the chief, he said that's going to knock a considerable amount of money off of that original thought of $160,000. But as Councilman Hill and I discussed earlier, well, you know, we started this, now we've got to see it through. We want to get those burned-out buildings, the boxes back there, out of sight, out of view, so we can use that land back there for something that looks a little bit better. Anything would look better. So we've got to get those out. The new burn building will be out of sight. You won't know where it is unless you're looking for it. You'll have to know where it is. You won't see it when you ride into town. So I, I think that we need to go ahead and move forward with this, get that, get that thing moved and out of the way.
Let me, I got a question. We, so first, the idea about it being moved was something I worked on about two years trying to get it moved. But now we said, I know it was $30,000 for a building, but now we at $160,000 for some concrete. Like, what's the number? Is, is, is it in his, is it in his budget?
Is it in his budget?
Yeah.
No, no, that's not his budget.
Well, now, how we, when it went over there and was doing, trained over there on some, some basketball courts, it wasn't that type of concrete that was over there for trucks to go over there. So why is we finna look at spending $160,000 on some concrete?
Well, one of the things is, again, a lot of conversation has been that those buildings is an eyesore, and I'm not trying to say that that's enormous, enormous amount of money to relocate. Yes, it's going to take some, some, some planning and, and moving, moving in, inside, let me finish. So inside of his budget also, trying to figure out how we can get that done. This is just to make sure that council, mayor and council, city administrator is aware of the progress, and there have been asks from some of this body members, what can we do to get that completed? So that's what, that's what we, that's where we are now.
What can we, it's our fire department, what?
Correct.
What can we, what can we do?
Mm-hmm.
It, it's our fire department.
Correct.
So when we talked about this project, it was $30,000. It wasn't $160,000. So this is my, this is my first time, it's $160,000.
Okay.
So I would like to know how we get to that number, like, what that money's going to be used for?
Yeah.
I think that's, we need, because when we talked about it, it was $30,000. And the county donated the land over there, they had some other people that donated doing some of the grading, and now we're talking about $160,000, and the only thing I heard was concrete.
Mm-hmm.
So I would, I would like to know, because the $30,000 that we talked about was for the building. So now he's coming up with, and it had, do we got a design? Have we, do, do we, we got a schematic?
I have not seen a design on that, but I'll make sure that I get that for you.
So.
As well as the justification for the budget, for the increase.
So I think y'all need to be walking real close with that project to make sure that everything is in line, and when they have meetings with these engineers, you guys need to be a part of it. You ask the question that, when it comes back for it, it's about, right here, y'all can answer it.
Yeah. Well, well, again, as you mentioned, as part of this fire safety committee, we are to update the council on what's going on, so we will get all that information as well.
And he also asked for two more people. I read in the report last month.
As, as we say, that the budget may have to give some dollars through his budget to get this done.
Yeah.
So we, right now, we're not walking in the blind, but we're walking, trying to make sure it get done the best and efficient way that possible. It may have to come off his budget.
So we'd like to table this until next month, and we, hopefully by then, we'll have a closer look at the budget and.
I think it was an action item, I think.
Well, he, he, he put it in his name.
No, it's not an action.
Just discussion, okay, it was just discussion, okay, all right, so, yeah, I think we just need to look at his budget and then also bring it next month, and let's, let's, let's move forward with it then, so. Once we have a clear identification.
The renderings and so forth and so on.
Yeah, yeah, okay, sounds good, all right. Anything else, Councilman Hill?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Gunner?
My action item was on something we've already discussed in previous meetings, but Councilman Cullors and I had met with Chris Rounds on a couple, a couple of different events with this. I kind of thought it was already in the process of being done, but he's got GMA money that'll pay for half of a piece of equipment that will, it's like a vacuum, big vacuum hose with a tank, and it's on a trailer, and it could be like a one-man operation. And so what it does is, when they're actually down in that mud replacing pipes, it pulls that mud out. So it's a, it's a preventative maintenance for us to not have mud in your water. So that's a big, big plus there. And with, he didn't expect to get this money to get, pay for half of it either. So I think it's a no-brainer to, we go ahead and get this. So I just wanted to make it a motion that we go ahead and make this purchase, and GMA money will pay for half of it, and it will be responsible for the other half.
I think it's in his budget, right?
Yeah, I think, I think it's, half of it's in his budget, so, yeah.
Yeah.
Second, got a motion by, second. Any discussion?
We don't went all around the world tonight about how much something costs to fund that action.
Do you have?
And I don't see nothing about how much this going to cost.
It was $140,000.
It was $140.
Yeah.
$140, so you asked $70,000.
Yeah.
And it's in his budget?
It's in his budget, yeah, there it is. Yeah, three or four times.
Yeah, we've been talking about, I thought it was already done, but we didn't ever come to a vote on it, so.
I think it's after $140,000 to buy it, but got a grant to pay for half of it.
Yeah, grant pays for half of it.
Got a motion, got a second. Any further discussion?
No.